At this time, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Wallingford Inland, Wetlands and Water Course Order. It's not a regular meeting. It's a special meeting because we moved the date from a week ago to today, the 19th of today. So the time is 7:05. Join me in a pledge allegiance to the flag.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Riley McKean.
Nick Kern.
Jim Vitale.
Deborah Phillips.
Michael Caruso.
Jeffrey Nakio.
Jim Heilmann.
Erin O'Hair, environmental planner.
Going on to consideration of the minutes of the meeting of June 7th. Is there any comments or corrections to the minutes? None being said, now entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the minutes of the regular meeting of June 7th, 2023 be approved as submitted.
Motion may be seconded.
I'll second.
Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Abstain.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes.
The abstention was Mr. Caruso, I understand.
Moving on, under Old Business, Application A 1812.2, 32 Barnes Road, Rowland Industries, request for bond release.
They're not ready.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Application A 235.5, 10 Mansion Road.
Yes, sir. Good evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano. I'm a professional land surveyor and professional engineer with the firm of Giuliano Associates. I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. With me tonight is Mr. George Logan, professional soil scientist with REMA Ecological Services. And with the commission's indulgence, I will move myself over to the easel and go through the drawings of my presentation. The proposed project before you this evening is for a restaurant located 10 Mansion Road. First drawing I have up here is the property and topographic survey, which is the existing condition. So I'll walk you through it just to orientate everyone on the commission. Along the bottom of the plan is Mansion Road, along the right side of the plan is South Turnpike. The property is approximately two acres with unique topography. As with respect to wetland features, we have a wetland water course that flows from west on this location on the map, kind of serpentines along to the eastern side of the property, discharges to a headwall that goes under South Turnpike. In addition, there is a drainage course from the existing drainage here on Mansion Road that flows through a drainage ditch located here in the property before connecting up with the wetlands in this location right here. The interesting thing about this property, with its unique topography, we actually have what's called the extended upland review area. As this commission is aware, once we have steep slopes over 50% in the upland review area or adjacent to it, we have to add additional up and review areas so those wetlands are protected. So we've done that to identify the steep slopes and added the additional up and review area on the mapping. As noted, the proposal is for a 3,500 square foot restaurant along with outdoor seating, parking area and an outdoor seating area, which we've designated on the plan. The restaurant is located here. We're in existing garage, which will be removed and torn down. Parking lot in the middle of the property here, and the lawn area for outdoor seating and stationary food trucks will be located right in that area. With respect to the grading, the proposed project tries to minimize the impacts to the property due to the steep slopes, so we're working with the grades. And an example of that is the three-season porch at the north side of the proposed building. We will be building that up on piers and cantilevering it so as to not disturb the steep slopes located in this area. Parking lot itself is located on the flat portion of the property, so it's going to require very little grading for construction purposes. And then this area of lawn area, we are actually filling in the area to the existing drainage ditch, and that's twofold. One, so we can have a relatively flat area for outdoor seating, and two, so that we can basically extend the existing storm drainage along the side of the proposed development down to this area of the property. Now, the storm drainage is sized to handle our 10-year design storm as required by our engineering department. We've also analyzed it for the 100-year storm to make sure that we meet all requirements and we will not have issues with respect to erosion potential at this location at the preformed scour hole that we're proposing. Other than that, there's some minimal grading in this area, which is basically, which we're taking care of with a wall to minimize, and that's just for the filling in of the drainage ditch. Now, with respect to wetland impacts, we prepared a special plan for the commission with this project, which basically identifies the wetlands and water course in green and blue. And then in the red and yellow hatching, those areas of up and review area that we will be disturbing. On this particular project, we identified the red hatch as areas of currently undisturbed or virgin up and review area, and the yellow areas are previously disturbed up and review area. We wanted to make a distinction since that some of the site has existing development on it that'll be removed and will be replaced. We tried to minimize the extent possible, the natural or virgin up and review area. So as you can see, we've kind of worked, again, with the property and with the topography to minimize the impacts for the project. As I said, I have Mr. George Logan here tonight with me, so if there are wetland-specific questions, he should be able to address them. And if there are any questions that the commission may have with respect to the site or the proposed development, grading, drainage, I'd be happy to answer them at this time.
Ally, any questions?
Not at this time.
No questions.
Mike?
Not at this time.
Not this time.
Jimmy?
Yeah, would you give us a little review of how you calculated your 50-foot additional setback with regard to the top of the slope?
Okay. The way the regulation is written, if the upland, or I'm sorry, if the steep slopes are located and stop within the upland, existing upland review line, so within 50 feet of the wetlands, which in the case here, the blue steep slope stopped before the traditional 50-foot up and review area. So we have to extend the up and review area 50 feet from where we changed from 50% slope to less than 50% slope. In those areas where the steep slope extends beyond the up and review area, we only add, we automatically add an additional. So we would have, in this case, a full 100 feet, and in this case, we'll have something less. I believe it ends up being about 84 feet.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Chris, can you give me a little more detail on the stormwater management plan?
Sure. So, and I apologize for going over that quick. I was focused on the drainage ditch, and I did not mention the actual storm drainage management. So with this plan, we have two elements or two, I'll call it two parts to the storm drainage system. The first part basically takes the driveway stormwater runoff that runs into Mansion Road. We have two catch basins located right here at the property line to prevent the majority of the stormwater from running into Mansion Road. This will convey stormwater to a proposed manhole, which is basically at the location of the former outlet, and convey that stormwater to our preformed scour hole. Now, the majority of the stormwater, which comes from the parking lot and the proposed building, is collected by a catch basin here located in the northeast corner of the parking lot. From there, stormwater flows into an underground detention system, which is made up or will be made up of Coltech plastic leaching units. Groundwater will be able to leach in since this is fill. We'll have very porous material here. We'll get good infiltration rates. It'll slow the water down in the system, and then it'll outlet coming out to the north and then tying into the extended drainage system at the second manhole here. So we're able to maintain and decrease peak flows for all storms up to it, including the 100-year storm. We continue to infiltrate water to help promote wetland growth and health, and with the added preformed scour hole will reduce erosion running along the prior-
And this drainage swale is, what's existing now, an open swale?
It's an open ditch, an open swale.
And is that going to continue?
Well, we are filling over it as part of the project in this area and just past where our lawn, proposed lawn area is, and the preformed scour hole, the drainage ditch will remain. So through, I'd say about another 30 feet from the 50-foot regulated, the-
It's going to be open?
It's going to be-
Rest is going to be piped?
Piped from this location all the way to the existing outlet here by Mansion Road.
All right, any other questions at the moment, gang? Seeing that there's none, continue.
If there are no more questions for me, I'll, if there are no more questions for Mr. Logan, I'll turn it back to the commission.
We don't know what to ask him yet. He hasn't said anything.
So I'll just give you a short presentation. George Logan for the record, REMA Ecological Services, registered soil scientist, certified senior ecologist, and professional wetland scientist. I am going to, first of all, point to the fact that there is a report in the record dated November 25th, which is sort of the substantiation of the wetland slash water course delineation that was done. I'm not going to go through too much of it except to point to a couple of things. So obviously, we have a incised ravine with a water course, and I'll discuss whether I think it's a perennial or intermittent water course or something in between. It's what you would call an erosional depositional system. This particular watershed has, it's supposed to be about 141 acres according to USGS Stream Stats, and I will pass this on to you. So I brought some exhibits. I can't help myself, sorry. The one-pager, which shows a little watershed, this is the USGS Stream Stats. What it tells you is that it's a .22 square miles, 141.
Could you speak up, please? George, I'm sorry, George, could you speak up a little bit?
There we go. We can't do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for letting me know. So what I've done is I've gone to Stream Stats, and I picked the point at the culvert that goes under the roadway to the east. You can see that there is, according to Stream Stats, that the percent development, percentage of developed urban land is estimated at 40%. Yeah, okay, we'll give them that. With an acreage of impervious area determined to be about 12.5. So, but it is an erosional depositional system. I think it's fraught with some pretty intense flows at times. You have a culvert on the upside, and you have a culvert on the downside. I provided some aerial, some photograph for you, sort of kind of see what the system looks like. If you have any questions on the photographs, let me know. One of the questions was, is this a perennial or an intermittent water course? That's a good question. And you typically rely on the USGS, and if you have a blue line, usually they consider that a perennial water course. There is a blue line, but it's for the water course. It's just the north that comes out of a pond and goes under the road. This one does not have a blue line. However, I was there yesterday, and as you can see from the photographs, they have greenery on them, that there's water flowing through the system. I would say an average, maybe a couple of inches of water. There's a couple of spots where it was a bit deeper. What I did note, which I usually try to figure out if there's any aquatic benthic organisms, and the ones that I saw, the ones that would probably fly in, so you had some water striders through. I didn't see too much anything else. There was a few green frogs. And as far as wildlife, I had four robins that didn't like me being there, and they were dive bombing me. But other than that, that's, you know, and some, you can see there that there's some raccoon sign on the newly deposited sediment or exposed sediment. So is this a perennial water course? It could be something in between. People sometimes use the semi-perennial water course, which means it's either a lower order perennial or higher order intermittent. So, so we're somewhere in there based on the watershed and what I've seen. The other question there was, I think, was regarding the soils. Obviously, anytime you have sandy soils and steep slopes, they're prone to being erosive. But I always like to kind of give a little more information. So the information that I did is I went into our websoil survey online and did the K factor, which is sort of an erodibility factor for rock-free whole soil. And you have a little sketch here, which probably doesn't mean much to you, but if you turn the page, there's some ratings. And if you go to the K factor rock-free, which is the little table, and you go down to, say, Manchester gravelly sandy loam, 15 to 45% slopes, which we definitely have here, you see the rating is .24. That's kind of moderate, low to moderate as far as erosibility based on K factor. And the reason for that is there's enough cohesiveness even in steep slopes and good infiltration capability so that the soils don't, are not prone to erode as much. Doesn't mean they won't. So we're kind of in the middle of the scale. For pinwoods, even though they don't have the pinwoods that are more than 8%, again, that will be lower based on what they say here. It will be a little more erosive if it had the e-slopes, but I don't think they classify pinwoods with e-slopes for some reason. So the other thing that I did note and from Erin's memo was something regarding, can we do some mitigation? The entire corridor is replete with invasive species. I mean, if you want to do a study on invasive species, that's where you go. In my personal view, trying to do anything as far as removing invasives probably causes more problem than not, because you're, again, you're in, and you'd be exposing sandy soils that are most likely prone to flash flooding. If you go up the slopes, they're pretty steep, even though they're surprisingly even on some two-to-one slopes on sandy soils that are stable, which is always surprising to me that that happens, because it's not much of a watershed to it. So whatever falls on the slope is basically the water that falls that moves, and it readily infiltrates. So I didn't see any scouring. Obviously, along the water course, it's a different story because of the flows that go through. So my advice was not to do anything. You have, unfortunately, you have Japanese knotweed, which is prevalent in water courses of this type, but it's almost impossible to get rid of it unless you spend a lot of effort and time, and I don't think it's worth it, in my view. You have other invasives that line the slope, but they're doing something. What they're doing is they're stabilizing the slope. So you have fire bush, you have Japanese barberry. They're stabilizing the slope. You get rid of them, try to fool around and maybe take some out and put some better things in. You have, you're risking an issue to the water course. On the flip side, you, one would say, because this particular water course really has low functioning as far as functions and values analysis. So something happened, and you get a little bit of erosional deposition down on the water course. Well, that's the kind of water course we have. It's an erosional depositional water course. So again, it's up to the commission if they thought that they would want some invasive removal and interplanting with native species that would do well in these kinds of droughty soils. We can certainly entertain it. So that's the limit of what I would have to say tonight, unless you have specific questions of me. And by the way, I'm glad to be before this commission. Anytime I come before this commission, remind me how long I've been doing this, because at least a couple of you folks have been on this commission as long as I've had a career, which is 35-plus years. That says anything.
Are you referring to anybody special?
Not anyone special.
Ally, questions?
How much outside material is going to be brought into the lot?
That's a question for our steam engineer.
And not only how much, what type of material is it going to be?
The type of material being brought in or fill material is going to take place centrally where the lawn area is proposed. So we're filling in this area. It's about 7,000 cubic yards in total, in that range. And it will be clean fill, because, one, I need something porous for infiltration purposes, and with the area would be clean fill. I mean, just so we can fill it up, create the lawn area, create a drainage package under it for this area. Now, some of that may come from areas on the site, but because there's an existing driveway there and an existing building, unless the material is deemed appropriate, structural, and clean, we'd haul it off and have it disposed of properly.
We, he talked about abrasive species that are there to take them away or leave them. What's this material you're bringing in? What's going to keep this from eroding back down over this, heading for the, I call it a little mini brook?
Along this northern edge of the lawn area, we actually have a retaining wall. So that's why there's very little grading in this area. This area where we do have some grading in the former drainage ditch, we'll stabilize that with an erosion control blanket until it's vegetated with grass, and it's all set. So we're holding the material back in the short term with our retaining wall here for the lawn. And then this area, since it is just to the west of where the retaining wall will be stopping, that'll be taken care of with an erosion control blanket, so it stays in place.
Because of the terrain out there and the types of soils, what extra measures are you taking for SNE control?
With respect to erosion control, where we're predominantly doing our work at the bottom here in the drainage ditch, we actually have three rows of silt fence. We do have the preformed scour hole. During construction, and this is depicted on the latest wetland impact plan that was submitted on the 18th, I believe, during the removal of trees within the drainage ditch, we have added stone check dams. So that way, if a storm were to occur after we've cleared some trees, or even after we've removed the stumps, we do have controls in place to slow the water down and prevent erosion through that area. As I said earlier, in this area where the three-season porch is, we're taking and using construction methods to limit the impact in this area and adjacent to the steep slopes. We also, at the request of the environmental planner, are going to be using erosion control blankets in this area as well. So with our predominant grading being here, we've kind of belted and suspended along our tree and clearing limit. We're protecting the drainage ditch during construction periods, and then throughout the other areas, we're using silt fence and erosion control mats.
Is this whole lot going to be opened up at one time?
No, no. It'll be done in phases. The first phase will be definitely the clearing for the drainage ditch, and get that stabilized and bring the fill in. Because once that's stabilized and done, the erosion control, the erosion potential is severely diminished. For the parking lot, we have very little grading. It is on the flattest part of the lot, and even where the proposed building is going, construction methods and topography are more favorable, so there'll be less erosion potential in those areas. I am most worried about the work that goes on through the drainage ditch, so that's why that'll be the first thing, to get that pipe extended, get the preformed scour hole in, along with the additional silt fences, so that we have that area taken care of, stabilized, so we limit any potential erosion issues.
What about concerns of the contractor or the excavators out there, and he trashes around and knocks the fences down? And we have our typical, we've had some really intense storms this year. They haven't been in showers. They come down in buckets. What's to prevent that from happening? Is there going to be some kind of construction fence, or you're going to do it on good faith that the contractor's not going to trash it?
We can definitely add construction fence, balance suspenders, and also add that, if you like, that my office, after any rainstorm, we go out and we do an inspection, and we report, we can report back through the environmental planner. If things need to be fixed, we'll document and make it known, and then give the contractor 72 hours to repair everything before they can continue on. I'm more than willing to put that on the table.
No, no questions.
Mike?
No questions.
Do you have a plan for snow removal from the parking lot?
Snow removal? Basically, what we're doing is, since this area, lawn area, will not be used in the winter, no outdoor seating, we're going to pile our snow here. It's got a 1% grade from the parking lot heading to the east. So it's very flat. It's large. We'll be able to pile snow up there and allow it to snowmelt. It'll infiltrate in into this area, and any snow that doesn't, some may end up, might be because of topography, some rain melt or snowmelt may end up coming into Mansion Road, where it'll be picked up by the storm drainage and flow to the north. The other snowmelt will flow along, come down to this area, flow through what was the original drainage ditch, over our preformed scour hole, and then continue on to the wetlands. But all those flows will be minor and slow, so they won't be an erosion problem.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's a couple of things that I need to look and be on tonight, but-
There's a couple of things that I need to look and beyond tonight, but one of the things that I was concerned about is the drainage ditch has evidence that at some point in history, it took lots of water. Otherwise, it wouldn't have eroded to the contour lines we're seeing here. Would you agree with that?
At some point, yes. I mean, based upon the size of the pipe, the slope of the pipe coming out of the existing catch basin, that's about 23 CFS coming out of there, which is quite large. I don't know if prior to the formalized of town drainage in the road, if it took more storm water through here, but there has been erosion historically through that area, yes.
Yeah, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that ditch was there prior to the road.
Most likely, yes.
Yeah, and at that point, it did probably convey water, but since the road was put in there a long time ago, I suspect, that whole drainage system has been altered by the road and therefore doesn't serve as a primary source of conveyance except from the road at this point.
This piece of drainage here takes water from Mansion Road. There's also a pipe that goes off to the northwest offsite and picks up some water from offsite beyond the road. But the majority of the storm water does flow actually and come out this culvert in this area and flow through.
Yeah, okay, I think the point I'm trying to make is that it's historical and for a very, very long time, it's been literally a ditch and not like what you see to the left on your diagram, more to the west. The western area is, of course, a water course, it's shown and identified clearly. And I just want to point out that in the wetland commissions, yeah, our concern is water courses and wetlands. The wetlands of this particular application is truly minimal in its utilization as wetlands for purification of water. Water transfers through this channel very quickly. It doesn't sit, it doesn't percolate much into the ground. Therefore, I am much less concerned about the steepness of slopes that feed into that, into this whole system than I would be if it were going into a different kind of terrain. That aside, I don't see any major concerns with the filling of the ditch that was a former course of water. It hasn't served that for a very long time. And I also make note of the fact that in the pictures that I've observed, I really see very young trees. Did you guys observe any real old trees in this area or is it almost all secondary growth? There's some older trees on this upper portion of the slope, even down to the ditch, the drainage ditch. I think part of it is the fact that, you know, if I look back at the aerial photographs, I probably would have a better idea of what's happened, but there are some larger trees, but there are relatively few. But they're at the top of the slope, yeah. I think this place has been actively farmed for trees at some point in the past, the fact that there are relatively few in any of these areas and the ravines have been there since the end of the glacial period, literally. I find it a fascinating project that's going on here. I don't see any major concerns with the wetlands as it is now. I do want to review this a little bit more beyond tonight in terms of the, what our regulations say and the interpretations of it. Regardless, I don't have any concern with what's going on here at this point. One thing that's interesting that I failed to mention, so when I delineated the edge of the regulated area, so the resource, I went up into the swale or drainage ditch, I don't know, maybe 30 feet or so, and then turned around because there were no longer soils or characteristics, just above it, there's bedrock. When you say bedrock, are you referring to the sandstone bedrock or this igneous bedrock? Igneous. Yeah, and quite honestly, those igneous rocks that you are finding in that area are not lava flows like we would find on the east side of town. These are intrusives and at the time, they were implanted into those lower units of sandstone, which surrounds them. The pressure of that intrusion is what created the structural deformation of the sandstone in the area. It fractured it, both concentric and radially, and as a result of that, we have these ravines and the steepness of the ravines we see today. And having seen that photograph of that igneous bedrock right there, it reflects to me very much what you would see, I guess it's Cheshire Wallingford Road where Luff Berry Park is. That was actually a volcano and you can see much more clearly the intrusion and the effects that it caused there, if you can get to see it without all the leaves, which are typical. But this is the same type of geology in this area. It's the same intrusive forces that created these ravines. And the fact that at the time of the implanting of the igneous intrusions, it fractured the rock. And no matter where you go on this earth, you will find that streams always erode places where the rock has been weakened and wherever rock is faulted, it's weakened and it follows the characters of those faults in all of these areas. It's a beautiful example of geology here, actually. Yeah, actually, and so photo number one is a rock face that you see right there. It's, it's inclined, like you said, and it's probably about 40 feet from the lowest point to the highest point.
All right, okay. Couple of questions, Chris. In your calculations of 7,000 yards, that's a fair quantity of product. Is that taking in the filling of the basement of the house?
No.
Yes?
I'm sorry, no. Basically, any material that comes out, I'm, because we have an existing garage here, existing pavement, I'm not sure what's under the soil, so I'm figuring about 7,000 cubic yards for this area will be material brought in. Materials in this area where the existing house, I'm sorry, existing garage, shed and driveway, I'm figuring underneath, knowing how long they've been there, it might not be the best material, so that material will be taken off, so it's not necessarily counted in that calculation.
Second of all, and this is probably a question for Jim to enter in on too, the drainage pipe from Mansion Road out to where it opens up again, what do you think about the value of perforated pipe here to get some recharge in that area?
I don't know what the soil conditions are there because once it gets the bedrock and we know the bedrock is pretty shallow and at least in some of these photographs, that's where the penetration fails.
Well, I think this area, without doing test pourings, the closer you get to Hartford Turnpike, it becomes more and more sand.
Absolutely does.
And I think you're right on the edge of the slope of the red rock as compared, well, similar to Yalesville in front of Lorings. Sand, 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 red rock. It started right up red rock.
Yep.
So I, I've.
I agree, yeah, that's a good point.
This may be an area to get some recharge. There, I think you're going to hit sand in that area, if it's not vertical, possibly lateral. Give it some thought. All right, Erin, what questions do you have?
Okay, I have a bunch. My comments went out earlier in the month and then my, I trust you got both in the packet, my comments and then later on July 20.
Close to the mic, Erin.
Oh, it's on, my comments and the environmental planners report. Is this okay? Okay. I trust you got both of them. Okay, so I have a lot of things I want to say, but big picture, I recommend a site walk either if you don't want to do one, Mr. Chairman, all together, then people look, this is a unique site, these ravines, I don't know if they have a geological name to them, but they're fairly unique and to see them and to get a sense of, especially the large one in the back, the large ravine, it is like a mini Grand Canyon. I mean, it's not as dramatic geologically, but it is a vast opening and that's why the restaurant owner wants to put his restaurant cantilevered over this to get that view because it is dramatic, I mean, it's jaw dropping. So to see that is great, that's kind of going to be fun, but for this commission to get a picture, a sense of the erosion, and I stress that in both my comment letter and the environmental planners report. And we haven't gotten to that yet in this discussion and we can, but as far as removal of trees on that slope and getting so close to the slope and grading on the edges of the slope, which is a highly erosive soil, and as everyone knows here, once you start erosion at the top of a slope, something that's 50% slope or greater, I mean, it's very challenging to get it under control. So we can talk about that and how that can work. And by the way, I went out there, I'll show pictures. The slope starts right behind that old garage and there's no, I mean, you could fall down there. It's right there and it keeps on going and they're going to take trees back 30 feet back at one point, 30 feet horizontally, if you read the plans, back below the garage. So take big trees, like, you know, 50, 60 foot trees. So when you take them off that slope, what's going to happen to that slope? I trust, I mean, Chris can, is this going to be, I trust they're not going to be stomped. I trust it's just going to be cut, cut at ground level, but still, those trees' roots are holding that slope in. So once, those roots will decay over time, you know, they'll last for five, I don't know, five, seven years, whatever. And so that's one concern. The other big concern is regarding this quote unquote drainage ditch, which in the previous, those of you who were on the commission back before I got here, in 2003, this was approved for a subdivision. So there's a few properties there. There was eight Mansion Road, 10 Mansion Road and 12 Mansion Road. Well, now there's 12. But it was eight and 10, I guess there was one, then it was split to eight and 10, then it was split to eight, 10 and 12. And now with this zone change, they merged the eight and the 10. So it's kind of one of these kind of things. And so, but anyway, going into, back into that file, this quote unquote drainage ditch was termed an intermittent water course by Tom Petrus, their wetland scientist, who most of you on the commission know, who used to come before the commission a lot. In his report, he termed it an intermittent water course. On the town of Wallingford Engineers topo map, it's, the symbol is intermittent water course. There's a certain symbol they use for that. I'd like to spend more time talking about this particular water course or drain, whatever you want to call it. In particular, I know when in George Logan's report, he just says it's a drainage ditch, but he doesn't specify why it's not in that report. That's all he says. He doesn't articulate why it's not an intermittent water course, which his colleague.
What effect, what effect does the application have on this intermittent water course?
Oh, if it's, if it's an intermittent water course, you are filling a water course. So it's a, it is, we don't normally fill water courses, I mean, wetland commission doesn't fill, doesn't permit.
Why are we filling a water course?
I'm sorry?
You're saying their application says we're filling, they're filling a water course?
No, they're calling it a drainage ditch, so we have to, we have to, before, I would recommend to the commission, before it allows this to be filled and goes ahead with it, that we do a little bit of discussion that the previous applicant on the same piece of property.
Okay, but I'm having trouble. What, what are we filling that we're into this?
I have photographs of.
I thought we were only filling over in the grassy area. Is that the grassy knoll? I'm getting more concerned about, how many trees are you taking down to fit the deck of the house or the deck of the restaurant?
We are just taking basically about, well, on the wetlands impact map, you can actually see. So that area in red, shaded in red on the wetlands impact map, where the proposed building is, shows exactly the amount of trees that we're taking down for that structure. That is the natural or virgin up and review area.
Do I have this one, Chris?
It's a wetland impact map. It was submitted, it was also updated and resubmitted back on the 18th, I believe. In fact, it's been submitted twice because after my colleague was here in June, Mr. Hauman noted that I didn't have topography on this originally, so I submitted it as a revision A with the topography and it got revised again when we were resubmitted just recently addressing your comments.
I have the old one, I don't know if I have the new one.
It would be the same way as the old one. That has not changed. Red area.
I think this is.
Red hatched area where the proposed building is going.
In this red hatch area, is there just one tree that's coming down?
No, it's a treed area.
This is all tree.
It's trees.
This is the existing garage right here.
It's treed?
It's treed in that area, yeah. So we mapped out the tree line and then to fit the proposed building, we have to remove trees.
Well, how many are there, Erin?
I didn't count them. It's 30 feet from here to there.
Well, that certainly, that certainly would be a major issue here if there's this massive tree area coming down. Have they got ribbons on them? Have they got anything that identifies them? Plus, your pictures, Erin, they're not filling that area, are they?
Yeah.
They are filling?
Yeah.
What, just by the corner of the garage, the red tree?
No, we're not filling in that area, Erin.
No, 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 the first set of photographs, I have like eight photographs of the quote unquote drainage ditch that I thought was, that is in the previous.
You said they're filling that.
They're filling that, yeah.
They're filling.
With 7,500 cubic yards of fill.
I think, I think issues are getting mixed here. We are cutting trees in that corner for the three, the portion of the new building, that's going to be a three season porch. The filling of the drainage ditch is this area located over here. The proposed building's going over in this area.
Okay, stop, go back to the first, the drainage ditch is there.
Correct.
That's the storm water off of Mansion Road.
Correct.
And they're piping that.
Or 130 feet of pipe?
Well, that's what they're suggesting, they're piping it.
About 130 feet.
All right, so that is what you're referring to as filling?
And filling 7,500 cubic yards on top of the pipe.
On top of the pipe, but it's.
It's in a, it's a ravine. It goes like this, so they have to fill it all up.
So you say it shouldn't be piped?
No, no, no.
No, no, yes, yes.
I'm suggesting it might be an intermittent water course, just to give the commission pause to say, is it? Tom Petrus thought it was.
Well, what if it is a water course? Do we pipe it or not?
Typically, this commission doesn't, but if you feel like that this is important to build this lawn area for their food trucks, et cetera, then you would approve the piping and the filling of 7,500 cubic yards, which, by the way, you, I don't think you've applied for a special permit to planning and zoning for that fill. You're going to need a special permit for that.
Okay.
Or anything over 100 cubic yards requires a special permit, fill.
No.
An excavation permit.
No, it's part of the site plan process.
I thought it was only up to 100 cubic yards.
I believe you're talking about earth excavation, filling and not as part of a site plan, two different things. Kevin has the application, he has not commented on it, so I'll deal with planning and zoning when I get there.
All right, so whether it's a drainage ditch or whether it's a intermittent water course, they're requesting to pipe it and cover it with 7,500 yards of fill area. That's the issue, that's one of your issues.
Oh, yes, and by the way, there was a discussion about big trees. Yes, you can see in the photograph number two and three, two large trees, yay big, three foot in diameter in the bottom of the channel. So I didn't know at the time that these large, the existence of these large trees was significant, but photograph two, I didn't number them, but it's the second and third photograph in that packet with the ravine and with the so-called drainage ditch, the first packet I passed around. The second packet only has two pictures in it, the second.
All right, so you had a few other things going on. What else is going on there?
That's the most important thing is to understand, to get to the bottom of why this is an intermittent water course or not, and I'd like George Logan, who's here, to. here, to tell me why it is not an intermittent water course.
Well, I don't think it matters whether it is or it isn't, either way, they want to pipe it, and the question is, is whether we want to let them pipe it or not. If we don't want to let them pipe it, then it's a dead issue.
Intermittent water courses are regulated, I believe, maybe a drainage ditch isn't, I'm not clear, but whatever, it's a pejorative term, whether or not it's regulated, I believe it could be regulated, actually, as a waterway.
So your feeling is if they call it a drainage ditch, they can pipe it?
No, no, I didn't say that, I think it's an intermittent water course, and I'd like to hear why it's not. But because I took pictures of their other property, they're going to present in a few minutes, Church Street, and for that one, George Logan called something an intermittent water course, and the pictures are pretty closely aligned, so-
The camera people mentioned to me before that they would have no objection going out with Erin and taking a movie of any of the applications. Does the group want to go take, try that out, or does the group want to take a site investigation on this? It's up to the group. Ally?
I'm actually partial to a site visit with Jean. With Jean, with Mr. Homan, with Commissioner Homan, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, site investigation.
All right, Mike?
Site visits.
Jimmy, you're requested, you don't have a choice.
I'm indifferent.
You've got to be there.
All right. Okay, when's the likely candidate for this? All right. Okay, today's the 26th. What, does it make a difference to anybody what day of the week?
I have next Wednesday open.
Wednesday open?
Yeah.
Okay, Wednesday, the, what would that be, August 2nd?
Second. I could have Tuesday, Tuesday-
Seven, second, okay.
Yeah, 5 o'clock is good.
Yeah.
5 o'clock is good for everybody?
5 o'clock is okay.
5 o'clock, August 2nd, onsite? Now Erin, didn't you also say that they should have had a wetland permit to take down the garage?
Yeah, that was surprising, the garage is being demolished, and they need, I talked to building, they don't yet have a demolition permit, and then it is within our extended upland review, they need a wetland permit to demolish the garage, any activity, as you know, any activity within the 50 feet, or in this case, the extended upland review area, which is, I don't know, 100, whatever it is, feet, would need a wetland permit.
If I can just make a comment, the regulation with respect to wetlands is for the removal or deposition of material. If they took down the structure of the garage, left up the slab, it would be the same thing as cutting a tree and leaving the stump. I don't believe that counts.
I, I'm sorry, I was trained to, maybe I'm wrong, but any activity, because when people go in to do activities, construction activity, sometimes they make a mess, so and they need erosion controls and so on.
I, I understand that, but the regulation, the statutory regulation, is deposition or removal of material disturbing the soil. If they just took down the structure, I don't believe that would require a wetlands permit. Now, if they touched the slab, or they do muck up around it within your upland review area, I believe you're 100% correct. But I haven't been out there to see what the situation is. Why don't we deal with that during the site walk, and not here drawing this out any longer?
Okay, so by definition, okay, we're looking under the regulated activity definitions, 2.1, 0.2, 0.3, activities within 50 feet of a wetland or water course, in this case, you're extended, but likely to impact or affect wetlands and water courses, including but not limited to any clearing, grubbing, filling, grading, paving, excavating, construction, erection of a structure, deposition, removal of material, or indigenous vegetation, landscaping, discharge of stormwater.
All right, we'll deal with it August 2nd.
But you definitely need a demolition permit, irrespective. The building, the building official told me-
Well, that's not our, that's their business, demolition permit.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes?
Number one, do you want me to talk about whether this is an intermittent water course or not, and/or should I be at the site, and then we can talk about it at the same time?
I think probably it would benefit at the site.
Mr. Chairman, could I get him at the site, it might be 89 degrees, and we're going to be spread out, I would like him to do a short description right now, it might be helpful, and it'd be on the record, we were not going to have to-
Ironically, August 2nd is supposed to be nice and comfortable here too, this Friday.
Okay, I don't think we're having-
But if you can give a extremely short definition, I'll entertain that.
Sure, intermittent water course has several characteristics. The first one that we can't avoid here is you have a channel and bank, so no one's going to argue you have a channel and bank. Then you have to have two out of three characteristics. One is to have a hydrophytic vegetation community, so 50% or more, you don't have it. The second part is to have the deposition of detritus or alluvial material. You can argue that one way or the other, but it has to be something that's broken up very finely, to detritus or have alluvium. So then, the last thing that comes into play is whether you have flowing water or ponded water for a duration greater than a storm event. That's as far as they go. The reason they did all this, and I've talked to the, the original founders, if you will, of the definition, is to, an intermittent water course has to have base flow. It cannot be surface-driven only. And in my personal view, this is only driven by surface water, therefore, it cannot be an intermittent water course.
Okay.
So in your opinion, Tom Petrus was incorrect? In 2003, when he said this was an intermittent water course?
Well, we, we won't know, because Mr. Petrus is not here, inform us.
That's right, we're going to move on.
Just for the record, I'd like to say, there's letters from Linda Bush saying, no one can ever develop this property, no one can ever fill this intermittent water course, and that was a reason given for, to deny different applications that Mr. Shalom Elke wanted, it was denied. Just, just, I'm just, just telling you that, I'm not saying it's not an intermittent water course.
It was denied for what reason?
Because of the intermittent water course, they couldn't fill it, they wanted to fill it, and they were denied. Not the Wetland Commission, for the planning zoning, she said, don't even apply.
Who was the applicant, who was going to put a subdivision in here?
Shalom Elke.
What?
Shalom was his first name, Elkes was his second name. No, not, not a big subdivision, just split it in two.
Well, Jimmy, do you recall?
Can I give you some history?
Yes.
This was all one, one property, at one point. Mr. Elkes owned it. He split it into three parcels, because the zone line between commercial and residential basically went through the property. So we had commercial, located here along South Turnpike, residential lot, and then we have a second residential lot. Obviously, since he did that, I think 80s, 90s, maybe 2000, no development's taken place on this site, on this commercial property. So my client comes along, wants to put a restaurant in, and he manages to convince the owner to sell to him, and we go through the process, basically to do both a zone change and to combine the properties. So now we have a larger piece of property that is more readily developed for a commercial use. And Planning and Zoning Commission granted us those, granted us the zone change, and that's why now we're here, the second step before you. So, that's a little brief history, whether it was one piece, got split into three, and now we've combined it.
I, I stole, you know, I, I recall a lot of projects that came before this commission, and obviously not all of them, but this one I don't recall, and I don't recall denying this application. And I was just trying to pull out the, where the rest of this came from, or who it was.
I don't, I don't know, the, the only design drawings I saw were those done by Bob Amatea when this was split into two lots, actually, split into three lots, three different lots. And it sat dormant, so obviously, as far as a commercial property, the eastern portion, no, no one had any sight to deal with the rock, trees, and everything that's there. I would like, just ask, for the site lock, would you like me to have the area flagged, so you could see the limit of trees to be cleared for the three-season porch?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like anything else flagged out, any other limits of clearing? I'd be happy to do it so it's identified, but I think the area to the east, where we are doing the lawn area, since the majority of that is beyond the upland review area, I don't know if it's as important to you, so I don't want to waste too much time and too much money on my client's behalf.
I, I think that area is very seen, you, you don't need to guess about it, it's there in front of you.
All right.
I think the tree area is a bigger issue.
Okay, so the tree area behind the proposed building, you want to see that flagged up?
Where the deck is going.
Perfect, okay, I'll make that happen.
Okay. All right. So we're set for August 2nd, onsite, 5:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next application, 823, 5.6, 898 Church Street. Jeez, where have I seen you guys before? Ray Ross, how's Ray Ross tonight?
All right. Good evening, for the record, my name is Christopher Giuliano, professional land surveyor, professional engineer with the firm Giuliano Associates, I maintain an office at 405 Main Street in the Yalesville section of town. Again, here with me tonight is Mr. George Logan, professional soil scientist with REMA Ecological Services. I'm going to head up to the bulletin board and go through my presentation for you.
Can everyone see Chris's map as well, or should he pull out the easel a little bit? I guess everybody's okay?
That's right, it doesn't matter.
Uh huh. You probably can hear him better, too.
This is another piece of- I believe this is another piece of property that a number of the members here on the commission are, are familiar with. The proposed property is located on the northwesterly corner of Church Street, which is Route 68, and Highland Avenue, which is located here. It's a little over seven and a quarter acres, or just about seven and a quarter acres, very gentle topography, unlike the last site, and with this site, we actually have three wetland areas. The first located here along the east, northeast portion of the property, adjacent to Highland Ave, a small pocket of wetlands right here, and then a larger area of wetlands in this area along the western portion of the property. So what is being proposed for this particular site is a multi, two-building, multifamily residential development. Basically, we're doing affordable housing on this site. This next plan is the site layout, which I'll walk through, just to go through the various elements that we are, will be talking about. As I said, we are proposing two buildings located in this area, a parking lot with access off of Route 68. We have some passive recreation located behind the buildings for the residents, and we will end up having a detention basin located in this area. Basically, we have, other than the wetland pocket, which is located here, we are skirting the edge of your upland review area to minimize disturbances. Prior applications on this property have always tried to come in off of Highland Avenue, however, I chose not to go in that direction for two reasons. First, I didn't want to have an impact to the existing neighbors on Highland Avenue in this area, and secondly, by bringing a driveway along the northern, northerly property line here, between the two wetlands, and trying to do something in this area would actually result in more wetlands and more upland review area disturbance than what we have proposed. I'm going to just jump to the wetland impact map, since I did mention impacts to wetlands, just so you can see it in color visually. And basically, as I said, in purple, we have a small little wetland that we are going to be removing, that's approximately 340 square feet. Majority of our upland review area is for the area adjacent around that little pocket. And then we have three other little fringe areas, one right here, where we have to clear some trees within the upland review area for grading for the parking lot area. Second area is here, located to the northwest of one of the buildings, again, so that we can just get the trees back away from the proposed building. The third area is right here, where our outlet from our detention basin will be going. To offset that wetland impact, or, yeah, the wetland impact, we are actually planting our proposed detention basin with a New England wet mix. So once this all germinates and takes hold, we'll actually be creating roughly 2,800 square feet of wetland area, so almost eight times what we're removing. So again, very little actual wetland impact, wetland creation along with the project. With respect to grading, again, we're working with the site to minimize grading along the fringe of the buildings and the parking area. We do have a removal of material for the detention basin, this detention basin is two feet deep. And then the majority of grading, as it impacts the wetlands, is actually to maintain or get grade so that we can discharge our water, our storm water, from the detention basin, so it can then flow into the natural wetland course that flows to the west, and then south into Route 6, the drainage system and Route 68. Utilities, we're bringing off Highland Avenue outside of the upland, upland review area, so there'll be no, should be no impact from bringing in the utilities there. Storm water for the back of the building is going to be collected in yard drains and brought into detention basin, even though it is clean, we want to control it. So we do have very little impact overall to the site. This site, with respect to erosion controls, much different, much easier than the last site, since we don't have a lot of elevation change, I don't anticipate a lot of sediment transport, so therefore, we went with a single row of silt fence, basically rigging the site, around the site, and even down along Route 68, because we will be required to install sidewalks along our frontage. Construction entrance coming in, and I know Erin had mentioned using the detention basin as a sediment pond during construction, that is fine, we can hold off installing the stand pipe, which will be located here, clean out the detention basin, and then install the stand pipe, so then it, once it's, all, all construction activities are done, it functions as intended. To handle the runoff and clean the runoff from the parking lot, we're actually installing a biofilter in accordance with the Connect DEP Stormwater Manual, Stormwater Quality Manual. So what that'll do is we'll remove the pollutant loads from the parking lot, along with the wetland vegetation, so we'll be able to meet water quality and water volume for detention basin sizing. Again, not a lot going on with this plan. Big fact, or the big issue here, big concern, is just the amount of wetlands on site, but I believe that my office has minimized those impacts to the maximum extent possible. I'll turn it over to the commission, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them at this time.
Ally?
No.
No, sir. No.
No questions?
No questions.
Your basin for your, in front of the parking lot there, along the road, the 266 elevation, you chose that from the wetlands to the west?
The elevation was so that I didn't get too deep into the ground, it's, it's, right now it's existing at 268. And I needed to be able to get storm water out from that to the wetlands on the west, and you are correct. So what I had to do is make sure that my elevation, I had enough pitch and elevation, and that's why I have a little bit of grading here as I'm wrapping the contour, so I get down to 265, 265 and a half for my outfall. So I do have about a half a foot of elevation change, so it does drain out.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I saw that. The, um, did you do any test pits at all, or is this all on a slab?
Buildings are on a slab, so we have no basements or anything like that. And again, only two feet into the soil. I don't believe I'm going to be hitting groundwater. We've been out there. And prior design, which was the church back in 2000, the church had a lot more impervious surface. They were much closer to the wetlands over here, and their basin was approximately three, three and a half feet from their existing grade, what they denote as existing grade. So since that didn't appear to be a problem at the time, I believe I will be fine at two feet. And if there is an issue, we could technically pick this up along with some of the site. We could pick it up if necessary. Okay, thank you.
Take that, please, Mr. Giuliano.
I'm sorry. If during construction of the area, we find that the groundwater is closer than two feet from the surface, we could lift the entire project up and get ourselves out of any groundwater issue. But again, I don't anticipate that based upon what we have proposed.
Based on what?
Hang on there.
Chris, I've been chasing deer out of there for 30 years, and I don't care when you go out there, it's wet. And the area you're talking about, what you're doing is something we've talked about in this commission. There's no more land that's dry. So you're taking, with your footprint, with the green, with the wetlands, you're, you're implanting something that you know isn't going to work, because it's just so wet out there. I, I can't support something like this, and now you just said it, this last mouthful, you'll raise it up. If you see you're going to have a problem, you'll raise it up. Of course, you're going to have a problem, because for the last 20 years, it's always wet. I don't care if you come in from Highland Avenue, if you come in from 68. There's one little spot there, maybe a 10 by 10, that you'll see a deer lay down there and sleep. Otherwise, they just commute through there because it is so wet. Excuse me. And we're not talking the same that plot to the next plot, the next street down. I don't know if your company designed that or not, but that's a little more higher up. There's a little more drier land, so we allowed you to develop that. But I, I, I just can't support this. And I'm just, you know, you're saying you're going to raise it up. You find you've got a water problem, you're already talking about raising the elevation up.
It would be a solution if, I mean, we're, we're two feet into the ground with the detention basin. I mean, that's not much at all, okay? I'm not anticipating. I'm not disagreeing with you that the site in general is wet. I mean, I grew up in this general area, so I've been up in this area. I know this area being wet. I know, I, I understand. And I understand, there's been a lot of people who have looked at this.
How can I, how can we give you approval to put that, just these two buildings in, and then you find out it's wet and you're going to, you need to raise the elevation another foot or two foot, just to get it dry enough so they can drive in there and park their cars? It's just, it's not a feasible lot, as far as I'm concerned.
Understood. I understand your opinion.
I think I share some of Nick's concerns, because if you've got to raise it up, that means you're bringing fill in. And you're not going to fill just what you're raising. You're going to have slopes going back. Driveways are going to be similar. And I've traveled that area a fair amount of time, and as Nick, I agree with Nick, no matter when, you look in there, it's, it's wet. It's standing water right from the corner in. I, I hate to, I mean, if I had to say why I wouldn't vote in favor of it, because you're filling that wetland in the center, because you've satisfied the setbacks on the 50-foot perimeters. Aaron, you got comments?
Uh, yes, a bunch. I trust everybody got my comments on this that went out a while ago, and then the environmental planners report that went out, that was written on Friday, went out Friday. Both of them went out in the packet, along with some of the Giuliano associate responses to my various comments. And, um, okay. Chris, a minor point, I asked for the bio, in your stormwater management maintenance plan, for the bio filtration strip to be in there, and the answer was that change is superfluous and does not add any value for the end users, as such, we have not been made.
No. I, I think you're mixing something up. The, you asked for information about the biofilter, about maintenance of the biofilter. So did the town engineer. Those, that change has been made, and you should have that.
I, well, this is dated Jul, July 19th. We got it July 19th. By the way, while Chris is looking for that, the commission, on the back of my environmental planners report, I attached a copy of the church approval back in the year 2000. That's before I got to town. But just to show, because I was curious, how the layout is the same, is pretty much the same. So that, on the back of my environmental planners report, that layout is the 2000, it was approved in 2000 by this commission. Pretty much the same. The entrance was off Highland Avenue. That was, that's the biggest difference, really.
Unfortunately, it appears, Aaron, that I do not seem to have my response, Romeo's response to you regarding that.
Well, here, here it is. I mean, I have it.
If I may look.
You know.
Apologize.
I've got extras.
You've asked me to change labels on the stormwater management maintenance plan. I had them originally labeled as catch basin, and I don't remember what the second one was. You wanted them labeled as stormwater inlet and outlet. To me, I'd rather have it labeled as a catch basin, so...
So did I. No, you misunderstand. I wanted it as a catch basin.
Okay. And that's what it was labeled originally, and we took it as you asking us to call it a stormwater inlet and outlet. And I said, was saying that the language that you're asking is superfluous, because the layperson understands what the term catch basin is. To say it's a stormwater inlet and outlet could mean a drain as catch basin, a culvert in or out. It's too...
Chris, in your first one, June 2nd, you called it a storm basin inlet and outlet. And I said, could you please call it a catch basin? I don't want to split hairs.
No, 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 no. If we misinterpreted, then that's on us, and I apologize for that. I do apologize for that.
So I asked for the biofilter to be put in as a maintenance. It's not in there yet.
Okay.
That's all. Minor point.
Again, I thought it was with the last revision to you or to the town engineer. I will make sure it's taken care of. This definitely isn't moving forward tonight. I understand that. And I believe I have to go out and have some deep test pits done. It is wet enough out there, so we can confirm, and we'll tighten up all the issues, not issues, all the matters between your comments and the way we may or may not have addressed them properly.
And...
Take care of that.
And the engineers' comments that went out to you on July 19th, if you could fold everything back in, fold all the revisions back in?
Yes. Most of it...
Answer her and all that.
Oh, they, she's, she's been answered, as you, you got a copy of the letter without the enclosures, but we did answer her. Most of her stuff dealt with the drainage and the computations. But yes, once I'm, once I know that Allison is satisfied with my responses and the data, the information we got her, yes, all that will be wrapped back in for this commission.
Thank you. Because I, I don't like to go fishing through seven documents to see who answered what when. Okay. The other thing, it just came to me tonight, if you're putting in that site, sidewalk, that's unregulated activity. There's wetlands all along there, all along Route 68. That's a regulated activity. I mean, it's not your wetlands, it's the state of Connecticut's wetlands, but still, you're building a sidewalk within the 50 feet of those wetlands.
We are showing or depicting a sidewalk on the plan. We're anticipating that planning is going to require it, because this is residential connecting to a residential area that already has sidewalks to our west. It could be required to be installed by Wallingford and then denied by state of Connecticut. Just so we're on the same page here. I don't know, again, I don't visit the state until, you know, the town has voted to approve. If it does vote to approve, I then have to go to the state. That changes a lot of things. So I will end up back in front of this commission, once I know the status of it. But I know the town is going to request it. The planning side is going to request it. I, I realize this commission may not want it, but between a rock and a hard place, between two commissions, when it comes to something like that.
Okay. Well, so why don't you just propose it?
The sidewalk is proposed.
No, propose it as a regulated activity.
Okay. I can propose that.
Some of, some of it's on your property, most of it's, the majority is on the state property.
The sidewalk here, which is likely within the upland review area, yes, that is state property. And this area, it's outside the upland review area, so this is not, so we're talking about on the west. That's fine. I'll add...
For about 80 feet on your property. Okay. Now, turning to the intermittent water course, which George Logan said this is an intermittent water course, we're talking about on state property now, okay?
Where are we? It's got to be right, okay, that's got to be that that goes into the drainage culvert and then down to the south and out.
Okay. So I, I'm just curious. I took pictures of it, and by his definition, for the previous project, this shouldn't be intermittent water course. So could you look at my pictures and tell me why it's an intermittent water course? In your report, you said it was.
Yeah, I'll take a look at it. That's, that's not a problem.
Because I'm getting confused. It doesn't, it doesn't have hydrophytic vegetation, it's, it's dry after a storm. I, I was...
Okay. I'll look at it. All right, well, and the only other comment I had to make, apart from the fact that I'm the, the actual delineator, is that the little isolated 300 plus or minus square foot wetland is man-made. That's an excavation. I don't know why, if someone wanted a skating pond or something, but that's man-made.
Where are you referring to?
The little isolated wetland.
Oh, the one in the center?
That's right, in the center. Bullseye. Yeah, that one. When, if, if and when you go look at it, you'll see it has very steep slopes, and that they're regular. And if you dig down in the soils, there's no topsoil, so not to speak of...
The chances are, they knew that there was wetlands right underneath it, so they excavated to get their ice skating rink. But anyway, we, there's issues going back and forth. One quick question. The outlet to the retention area flows down to Shire Drive?
No. The outlet for the detention basin flows under our driveway. Storm water will then enter into the existing low area of the wetland, flow westerly, and then it flows south to the existing head wall in the state right of way, goes under Route 68, and then continues south through what was Ianini's property and now is Wadsworth.
Sure.
Yeah.
Continue south to where, please?
Flows out to the south to property now of Wadsworth, formerly of Ianini.
Okay.
The, you stand up there, you can see where the water originally flowed right across 68 and right down through Wadworth and Marion Tur Farm and right over to McNally's. You can see how the land lays right in that way. Well, Aaron, you're still looking for information from them?
Yes, sir. Can I ask two more questions, please, on this?
Well, answer mine first.
Oh, I'm sorry?
Are you still looking for information from them?
Yes.
Yes, right?
Yes.
I mean, you're asking them to change things on the map?
Yes.
Okay. What's your question?
What, there's no emergency spillway for the detention basin, and your response was that you're putting extra protection on the outlet structure or riser pipe, stand pipe?
Stand pipe, the top of the stand pipe is the emergency spillway. The detention basin, as designed, will hold up to and including the 100-year storm and still have a foot of freeboard, meaning free area from that to the berm or top of the embankment for the detention basin. We also, as noted in the drainage calculations, we ran a scenario where all the perforations on the stand pipe were clogged, not functioning, which I would call a failure due to maintenance. Basin still functioned. All the water from the 100-year storm still stayed in the basin, and the grate at the top of that 24-inch diameter stand pipe handles all the flows.
I don't know why they require an emergency spillway, but I guess the town engineer does. I'll let her deal with that.
She, she mentioned it, and I answered exactly how I've mentioned it to you. It does have an emergency spillway to handle a 100-year storm. That's the regulation. If she wants something more, I will discuss with her, but I don't think...
Okay, well, let's...
My last question for tonight was, and I share this with the town engineer, when that water comes out of that detention basin, goes under your driveway, your new, your proposed driveway, and spills out there, it spills out five feet from the property line. And we were wondering if you could move it away. We don't like to spill storm water that close to a property line.
That was one of the comments, yes. And I think it was either, it was your comment, part of our original outlet protection was slightly over the property line. We did move it. We'll look to adjust a little bit more and get it further away. That's fine. But as based upon topography, we're discharging here, the water is going to flow onto our property, more onto our property, before hooking around. It's higher in this area than on our property, so it's going to stay on our property. But I will make some more tweaks and adjustments to that.
How is it, how is it outletting five feet on the property line?
Well, we're outletting very close to the property line in this area.
But it's outline, it's outletting to your own property?
On my own property. And they're concerned that it's going to flow directly to the state's property.
Well, okay. We're going to, are commissioners interested in tabling this? Or the, like, consensus opinion seems to be yes. Okay. Table till next month.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, all right, all right. I lost my agenda. Oh, it's right here on top, that's why. Um, oh, that's not it. Here it is. Under new business, this is 55 Kandraki Lane, 55 LLC, discussion and possible action regarding a cease and desist, or cease and correct order in 2018. Now, this has opened up to be a pretty good can of worms, that Brook Hollow Convalescent Home had a washout in their driveway. They asked for a emergency administration approval. I, I happened not to, I was not at that meeting, but you guys worked out and gave them approval with conditions. One of the conditions they never did, and the condition was a map of what they were going to do, a plan of what they were going to do to correct the problem. And Aaron chased them, and they ignored her, and Aaron let it go by the wayside and did not get, and there was no action taken. Really, a cease and desist could have been issued back then because they didn't submit the plan. That was required as a condition of approval. So now we fast forward, and some of the neighbors, five years later, are saying, oh, by the way, this, what they corrected was undersized from what was originally approved. It was something like 60 inches approved to begin with, and now they're down to 36 inches on one side and maybe a little more on the other. Supposedly it comes out as a fire hose, so somebody's getting some erosion, some other people got some other problem. people got some other problem. So now there's this issue going on, and the town, or Erin's been in discussing with the new owners of Brook Hollow, which is 55 LLC, and they're saying, you gotta fix it, and they say, we're not fixing it. If you didn't take care of it five years ago, deal with it five years ago, we're not dealing with it. So I think that's where we're coming here. Now, according to Erin, she in contact with Janice, I get the, Janice is waiting for what this commission is looking to do. I don't think, I think this is the first time I've brought up an issue that I always felt that the town had various properties that were natural holding areas, flood storage areas. My own backyard is one of them, it's got two ravines, it had dams on it at one time. And so if we restrict that water a little, I don't think it's the worst thing going on, providing it's not doing any harm to anybody. From what I understand, the majority of the flooding is on their own property, it's having some effect on one gentleman, but he hasn't been the one that has caused, or created, responded to an issue. The other issue is downstream, some people are getting washed out supposedly because of the high volume coming out of the smaller pipe. There's also a gentleman down there that did some land activity on his property without a permit, and there was some talk about the after-the-fact permit. I'm not, I've never been a real favor of the after-the-fact permit concept, it's like, well, I did this, and, oh, well, now I got a permit for it. So I think that brings us up to this question, in what direction are we going to send the town? Is it the town's fault that this wasn't done five years ago? Is it Erin's fault it wasn't done five years ago? Was the contractor that should have been held, held, should we change our policy and such things be recorded on land records? I mean, this could have been resolved had it been recorded on a land record, that when they did a title search, it surfaced. So those are the concepts that's going on here tonight. I don't think it's going to end up to be pleasant, no matter what ends up happening, but I'll turn it over to Erin right now and see if I've described it accurately.
Okay, what brought this to light, it was sleeping, it was sleeping for several years, what woke a sleeping dog was they, a new owner came along and applied to planning and zoning for a special permit change of use from a nursing home to 72 apartments. So, you know, we, it gets referred around, and I, it got referred to me, does it need a wetland permit? So I went out there and determined it did not need a wetland permit, they were doing minor changes, adding a few more parking spaces, but no, it didn't rise to the level needing a permit in terms of impervious surface, and they weren't changing any discharges to the river or doing anything within 50 feet of the river. So it didn't need a permit, but it unearthed this, but there were complaints coming in, triggered, probably woken up by the special permit application. So the neighbors, the neighbors started calling the planning office, and then I got pulled into it, and so then it became clear, and that we have a new town engineer, and she said, what's going on with this culvert? And, because she, it was a different town engineer at the time, and then she says, you know, it's slip lined, and, you know, all these things cart unfolding, but what's the plan for this slip line culvert? Well, there is, that, there was no plan. We gave them their, originally back in June, May 2018, their driveway failed, and the fire department couldn't get the trucks in, their trucks in there, and of course, it was a nursing home, people, there were emergencies, people had to go dialysis, et cetera, et cetera, and half, one of the lanes failed on their driveway, two-lane driveway. It collapsed. We now know the reason it collapsed is one of the culverts collapsed underneath, so then everything collapsed on top of it, and there's utilities, there's gas and electric and sanitary and water going through there, too. So everything was in jeopardy. And so they ran in, they asked, they didn't have time for a regular permit, they asked for a cease and correct order, they actually asked for it. As opposed to a cease and desist, when you stop, this was cease and correct, these are used in emergency situations. So the commission was on board with this, okay, we can help you out, we'll do a cease and correct order. And it's in, the copy of it's in there, attached. The first thing they handed out tonight was what the Planning and Zoning Commission requested I write, they requested to the town planner, please have her write this, this is so confusing, please lay it out to us what all went on. So I did a chronology so that they would understand, because there's a lot, a lot of water under the dam, over the dam, through the bridge, whatever. So, anyway, so what happened, so we, we gave them the cease and correct order, and they were going to build it within a month, corrected, corrected. They need a plan, they needed calculations. The months went by, now it's October, I'm talking to the law department, we're going to do an injunction. They got their cease and correct order, they haven't done anything. They haven't given us a plan, they haven't given us calculations, they've done squat. And as a courtesy, I told, I called the executive director, and I said, this week we're sending out an injunction order, and he said, for what? And I said, for the culvert, he said, it went in last week. And I said, pardon me? Well, it went in last week, we did it last week. I said, I'll be right out to see it, but you were supposed to hand in a plan, it's in your order, a plan and calculations, so my town engineer could review the planning calculations, it's right there in the order before that thing went in. Okay? They had, they didn't do it, they, they didn't comply with the order. But the good news is, they put, they put, they did repair work, they did repair work, and then the fire trucks could get through, and the day was saved. We still don't know what was built out there, we have no, I mean, you can look at it, I have photographs, it's a supposition, we don't know the condition of this culvert, these two, it's two culverts, we don't know their condition, we don't know how they've changed the hydrology, we'd like to know, but at this moment, we don't know. And, you know, I chased them for five months to get that thing built, and I guess I knew it was a fool's errand to chase them for five more months for a plan and calculations that they would never, ever give me, because they didn't exist.
But you should have given them a violation, then. Because here, work was done with no conditions of approval.
It was brought in front of the commission, you extended the corrective order till February, and then we, yes, I dropped it, and it was never mentioned again after February, but they were, it was sent to them...
If we, if we approved it, it's because you said everything was okay.
No, 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 you approved it in June.
In June, but with conditions of approval, with the approval, plans?
Yes.
And you had to be notified?
Yes.
And they didn't do any of that?
And they were sent letters in, all through the summer and the fall, and into February, and then it was dropped after February, I guess because we knew it was hopeless getting them to give us plans and calculations.
I don't know if what we knew, we just, it was dropped, it wasn't followed through.
The contractor, they couldn't get anyone to do it, they finally got somebody from Maine to do it, and I don't know the name of the contractor. Anyway, so now, this, we have, we have asked, we've had many meetings on this, many hours of meetings on this, with the current owner, the current owner's attorney, the law department, the town planner, town engineer, everybody, lots of meetings, and we wanted them to give us a status report, like, what is the condition of this culvert? Tell us, from an engineering point of view. And, you know, the, as it's, they weren't, they weren't going to do it now, but they'd, through discussions, it would be done as a condition of approval, that that would be a condition of approval for their special permit, that they, the planning and zoning department, the planning and zoning commission would ask them to do, among other things, other conditions, a hydrologic report of the status of this culvert, not just the status of how it was built, how it's functioning, but its, its effect, because it wasn't built to the original standards, it's smaller, the culverts are smaller, of impact upstream and downstream from the fact that when they did the repair work, they made it smaller, and no one gave permission to, but they did. We thought that was fair, and, but they don't, it's going to cost $40,000, $50,000 to do just to satisfy that one condition of approval. So then, you know, we're exploring other options. So at this point, what I've, in meetings with the law department, and I also agree with that, what, that we should follow it, the wetland commission should pursue its own line of inquiries, separate from whatever the planning and zoning does, even if they withdraw from planning and zoning, let's say they throw in the towel and they're not going to go to planning and zoning, I would suggest to this commission to pursue it some way, but one would have to decide, okay, how we're going to pursue it. They didn't comply with the terms from a 2018 cease and correct order, they didn't give us, they did some of the things, but they didn't give us the plans and the calculations. They did put in a repair, but they didn't do the plans and the calculations. And by the way, I can't see it, it's so covered with jungle vegetation, I've asked them to clear it up, clear away the vegetation, so people, the engineers, inspectors, whoever can look, and they, they have not yet done that. There's also a protrusion, I did, I failed to give you that photograph, in the middle of one of these culverts, when you get down on your hands and knees, which I did on the Doolittle property, looking up there, there's a protrusion in the middle of this culvert, it looks, I call it a pregnant belly, in the middle of this, the smaller culvert, there's a protrusion. I don't know what's causing that, it doesn't, it's not like a rock or a tree, it's something, I think it was intentional, so that somebody should look at that. What that is doing to things, I don't know, how that's functioning or affects the functioning. So what I wanted to ask for the commission tonight is, where do you want me to take this? I can, for instance, I can write a letter to the current owner, saying something like, we understand you're the current owner, but it has come to our attention that the culvert that is out there today may or may not be functioning adequately, and may or may not be causing downstream erosion, which is being reported by property owners downstream, and may or may not be causing upstream flooding, which is being reported by the folks living upstream. So we're trying to get to the bottom of this, and would you please supply calculations and a status report, a brief status report, starting with a brief report about the condition of this crossing? Which wouldn't require all sorts of calculations, and then we can go from there. There's another alternative, that we could hire a consultant to do it, rather than waiting for this new property owner to do it, and I understand it, they didn't know there was a problem, they honestly didn't know that there was this problem when they bought the property. So we could hire a consultant, we have money, we have a budget, a line item for...
To do what? What's the consultant going to do?
Um, well, this is, we're just hashing this out, we're kicking this around.
You're looking at $40,000 to do something that we got $2,000 in our budget?
Yes, and I...
But is this what we want to spend it on? I mean, this is, this, I've got a little bit of trouble looking at this from wetland standpoint. I mean, we're crossing a brook, but it really ends up to be an engineering problem. Now, it is washing out down below, so maybe that erosion falls under our purview, but I don't see it as a real clean-cut wetland situation. I don't know how to get around it, I don't know what the exact answer is, is it a whole town problem because it didn't get done 18, in 2018? I gotta, I mean, if we're guilty of anything, it's just not getting a plan submitted, what they were going to do. So if they submit a plan with what's been done, and engineering says, oh, that's not satisfactory, then what happens? Who's going to take it out? I hate to see money thrown away and then spend money to fix it, if that's what's going to be done. So, other comments, Ally?
Well, I, I think that when you buy a house, and something's terribly wrong with it, that you didn't notice before you bought it, that's not on anybody else's problem but your own. So they've got to comply, and I do think it's a really good idea for us to attach, in the future, moving forward, to attach violations to land records so that nobody stumbles into this unawares again.
I agree.
I'm concerned, Erin, about the size, the pictures you just showed us, they downsized the flow through those pipes, it looks to me as though they just sleeved them, they left the original...
Yes.
Walls, the headwalls were there, but then they slid plastic pipe in to fix...
That's what they did, yes.
Yeah, which isn't the way you fix it. And first, and second of all, they're too small, why is one smaller than the other, when there was already a water problem out there? The one picture you showed us has got debris on the north side, or I call the north side, it would be the water flow side, so there's continuous problems with branches, trees, limbs, whatever, damming up there and causing a water backup. So if there's people complaining because of the water before the driveway, I can understand that because the culvert's not clean, the headwall's not cleaned. Downstream, we're going to open up a can of worms, we tell them to bring it back to, originally it was 48 and 48, or 46 and 46, right now I think it's 46 and 32?
46 and 36.
46 and 36.
The opening, the actual opening.
Right, which, who, who made the decision to do this?
Do what?
To do, put the 46 and 36, or 48 and 36 in there?
We have no idea.
Right, so as far as we're concerned, we, we, they came to us and they went and did what they wanted to do, and left us high and dry. Nobody ever contacted you to come out there and prove it, there was no bond? Yes or no?
Oh, no bond.
Okay, so you never went out there after the work was complete?
Oh, I did.
And you signed it off?
No, no, I went out to, I was curious, I ran out there to see what they had done.
And then where did it go from there?
Then I brought it to the commission, and then there's a, there's a lot of correspondence, then I asked the town engineer to go out there with me, and then it was not pursued after February, they put it in November 2nd, and we dropped the trail in February.
All right, so then, we need to notify them through legal that it wasn't done properly, and we didn't receive to print what they were doing, and they didn't have our approval to do it, and then they need to, as far as I'm concerned, they need to start over and do it right. And the bulge you're talking about, it's just, it's a boil that's going to pop again. It's a bulge there in the driveway, and it's because something drove over heavy enough to wound that piece of plastic pipe, because you've got to have a certain amount of fill over those pipes to be, to be strong enough to hold up. So the fire truck, the delivery man, whoever it was, drove over those pipes and caused the bulge. Because those pipes are great if you have enough, you have the proper and adequate fill over the top of them, they're just like concrete. So with, I believe we need to get the legal involved and have them send a letter that we need a print of what they're going to do, and it needs to be done correctly.
So that's really a dangerous thing, though, when they take a construction vehicle over that, then that could cause another collapse.
Right.
I'm sure, I'm sure that landowner would not want to deal with that.
I think we had a...
Very interesting.
A multi-department failure, not only wetlands, but engineering, so I, I think we do have to look at it legally, to do something, fix this.
Mike?
My guess is going to be that they, pipes they could fit out of the collapse, that's how they went with that. I don't know how it falls on us, this should be in engineering, this should be, even the fire department has to approve these bridges, we've had this in the past, where people have put the pipes in and other departments have to approve it. I don't think this falls on us pretty much at all, I think it's a failure of the other departments who didn't approve it to begin with.
Meaning, the engineering?
As far as, as far as the buyer goes, probably represented to them that the bridge was fine, it was part of the purchase, so they should be looking back at where they bought it from.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that last part?
They should be looking back at the company they bought, or the firm they bought the building from, they probably represented that the bridge was fine.
Probably are.
Just not talking loud enough.
Just as an aside, did everyone get, there was a memo from the engineering department today I got on this subject, did I hand that out yet? I would have handed it out tonight, you got it?
I have it.
I dated today?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's a piece, she, she, town engineer, Allison Capusinci, did put that together today on this, you know, from an engineering point of view, what her position was, and again, she was not here when this happened.
Jeff?
I'd agree with Mike, it seems to be more of an engineering issue.
Jimmy?
No comment.
The, uh, that's why it's a whole-town, like, Mike has brought it in together. We're getting pinpointed, I think, because we gave them the first approval to redo it, to fix the pipe, and then we didn't follow, they didn't, they didn't do the conditions of approval, and we dropped the ball from there. But I think it's a town, a whole-town is going to be at issue with this. So, it goes back to Janice and says, "Deal with what the town departments want to do."
Okay, okay. I just want to clarify why we gave the correct, the cease and correct order, is that we, this commission regulates activities in wetlands and watercourses, and to fix this bridge, they had all sorts of equipment in the channel, and they were going to be mucking around in there, so we knew that. That's why we had to give the order. You know what I mean? That's why it fell on us to give the order.
But the order was a good order, that you got to submit plans.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking, if something is in the public health, safety, and welfare, you would think that maybe there would be somebody else giving the order. I don't know, fire department, or I don't know where that would fall, but, because it was a public health issue.
You know, it's assumed that they were going to fix it right. They put a Band-Aid in there.
We're not interested in pointing fingers here, Erin. We want the corrective action. And I believe the building department has the authority not to give him a CO to change it from senior housing to apartments, or whatever you just said they're going to do. So, before he can get his CO to let anybody move in, he's got to comply to what we're asking him.
That's the way the planning department has framed it, that it is hinged on the CO. The CO, getting the CO is hinged on doing this hydrological study and making it right.
That, that's great, but the money and time they're going to spend on that, they could probably do it, take that money and put it towards fixing it the right way, and get rid of the 36 and the 48, and put the two 48s back in there.
Right. I'm told it's a $300,000 fix.
Well, aren't you also told that if Planning and Zoning gives them approval, they're going to sue the town? Because of the conditions associated with it?
That was, that was, I don't know how, that might have been disingenuous, I don't know. They are really in a bad position right now. The new owners are really up against it right now.
Who is?
The new owners. They don't, they're looking at a $300,000 fix that they didn't even know they had a problem? I mean, it is, it is a difficult problem.
I think you've got your direction.
Okay, could you repeat my direction?
Sounded to me like the direction of the commission said this is a town-wide problem, not just wetlands, and it goes back to legal with the decision of what the department heads want to do.
Okay, because legal was, had directed me to...
Okay, legal, legal wants a direction from wetlands.
Yes.
Wetlands says, "Go back to the rest of the department," because everybody's got a piece of it. Certainly, if wetlands hasn't got the engineering ability to decide if the fix was correct or not.
Okay, let me just, yes, I will do that. I will do that. That's my directive. And, at this point, we have people calling up the building, the planning department in my department, saying, "I'm getting flooding," or "I'm getting erosion," and we, no one is certain if those narrowed culverts are the cause, or maybe we're getting bigger storms, or maybe they're always flooding. Maybe these properties over, always flood, and they're just paying attention. We wanted, that's where I got to this idea of a consultant who would say, "Given this water..."
I don't think the consultant is going to provide anything more than what any of us know, and that is, the pipes are too small. Unless the consultant, you're looking for the consultant to tell you what? Yeah, the pipes are too small.
You know, it's interesting...
Now, if the law department says, "We need a consultant," and maybe it should be an engineering consultant, not a wetlands expert, if the law department, because obviously the next step could be a legal battle, and if you're going to legal battle, you need experts with credentials to testify. So, I think it's a discussion with, that you need to have with Janice, and what is it that you want to do next here? What do you want to do, what, what answer are you looking for from an expert?
Well, okay, there is another element to this that I didn't really appreciate until it was explained to me, that this is private property. If this was a public crossing, a road crossing, engineering department will be all over it. They do not enter private property situations. That's not their purview.
But, but all of our plans usually get reviewed by engineering.
Correct.
Anything like a driveway crossing, or a wetlands retention fund, is engineer, engineer gets to review it.
Correct.
Yeah, we've, we've done that in the past. We've had it with the Department of Engineering.
You just, you just answered your own question. It's going, it's private property. The town of Longford should not be involved. They're only to approve of what's going to be installed.
Yes.
That means a set of plans, and a print, and then a construction sequence. We shouldn't be, all we're here for is to make sure it's done right, and it hasn't been done right yet. So, why, we're not involved in this until we see a set of plans come in front of us.
Right, but this is where we get into the circular thing going on. Nobody wants to...
Right. So, there is a circular thing going on, but the thing is, bigger than the water.
I'm sorry?
In this particular case, this is a public safety issue with whether or not he's even going to be able to have apartments in there, or whether the first truck that goes to deliver drywall collapses the bridge. So, this is a safety issue. It's a public safety issue. Same as it was when it was a hospital. And to convert a hospital into residential apartment is a monumental task. I, you know, it's unfortunate if the landowner doesn't have, the new landowner doesn't have the funds to make that happen, but this is part of that. And that is still another issue, aside from whether or not the water backs up or not. If you want to know if the water, if that's due to it being, the pipes being too small, just go out there on a big rain and see if, how much the water has puddled up behind the bridge. Or how fast, you can just observe it from the bridge. Is there, is there deep standing water? Is it above the culvert? Is it shooting out the other side? You know, like, you know, the Hoover Dam, and it releases water? You know, you can just observe that.
You knew that the whole thing.
The original engineer who came before the commission, Mike Ott, did say, "A hundred-year storm would back it up 15 feet." But the good news is, you've got the 15 feet before the driveway, so it goes like this. Drive was up here, he says, "You got the 15 feet." It would back it up, yes, in a hundred-year storm, but you got the 15 feet. And I'm talking to engineers that say, "No, you do not account for that. You do not let it build up 15 feet."
You know, you, the people that you made reference to are complaining are private citizens, and this is on private property. Maybe this is a civil matter. Maybe this is between the people that are getting erosion and, and 55 LLC. Hmm, think about that one.
Or, and, I have another idea, that we send them a letter, and they never respond to our letter, meaning the new owners, but we have taken action. We have requested, you never complied with, so it's, "Give us a plan, give us," but, and we send the letter out. At least we tried.
Well, I think this is a huge legal issue.
It is, yeah.
And at this point, I don't think we're ready to hire consultants.
We don't need to hire consultants.
There's calculations when the original bridge went in. Is there calculations? When the original crossing?
No, they can't find them in the, it went in like in, I don't know, seven, 1978? 1978 or something like that, and there's, it's not in the file.
I think Enswaldo out of the...
They looked for them, they're not there.
All right, let's move, let's move on. Um, please, God help me. Item 7, new applications, that's actually already administration approval. I thought you weren't even going to put it on here.
Oh, oh, oh.
For Macabola Lane, it's a, it's a pool.
No, no, no. I, I always put it on to show that it was approved.
It was approved?
Yeah.
All right. Now, we're going to, we're going to jump up to violations with a couple of the folks that are here. The 24 Maplewood Avenue, Patricia Clark. Okay? Erin had tremendous response with, with Patricia Clark. Liz Verna was in, as a intermediary between the two. The last I knew, Patricia Clark agreed to everything, and there was one area that turned out to be a little questionable, and that was the allowing the neighbor, Tim Clark, to pipe his water right across the corner of her property. And I asked Erin to get it in writing, to have her sign that she's in agreement with all, or none, or some, and she went ballistic and fell back into her list. Now, Erin indicates that there's some justification at this moment for her, her being the way she is, but I don't know of anything. Now, there was some discussion that Mr., Mr. Tim Clark was able to run a pipe across the other neighbor. Now, Mr. Clark is here tonight. I'd like to have him come forward to see if my information is correct or not. Yeah, that's fine. Are you still pursuing, you're, Tim Clark?
Tim Clark, 11 Rolling Meadow Drive.
11 Rolling Meadow. Are you still pursuing a pipe to go, not on the Patricia Clark property, but to go across the neighbor and then down into the wetlands?
Yes.
Okay. And would you consider a pipe across Patricia Clark's property if she allowed you?
Yes, it would make it easier.
And, and Erin talked about the high water flowing across Patricia Clark's property. I still maintain that's where the water flowed naturally since time began.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so, you got it, Erin? Depends now if he, if he's successful with the gentleman, his neighbor on Rolling Meadow, he's running a pipe in that direction.
All right. Mr. Clark, I know we talked a month ago, and you were going to approach your neighbor. Has that happened?
Yes, and he'd be willing, he'd be willing for us to go across it.
I'm sorry?
He would be willing for us to go across it.
Okay, and of course, the ish, the only but is, is the sewer...
I'm sure they'll take that into consideration, because it doesn't have to be deep, it's going to be self-draining.
Right.
It's going to be daylight and self-draining. That's, that's, we can make mention to him, but that's between he and the contractor and the neighbor.
All right, and can, should he bring a plan in? Is it, it's within our 50 feet?
I think it would be a good idea to have a plan in.
Okay, that's, that's reasonable, sure.
And I think some of the interesting of the plan would be the size of the pipe, because you do get a pretty good flow at that point.
Okay.
Okay, but you're still going to pursue with Patricia Clark?
Yes, because she, and Liz Verna had an agreement, we wrote it all out. I think what's, one thing that set her off is through that big storm, and she took a video about a month, a week ago.
I don't want to hear it, because this is a 10, 15-year-old problem.
Yes, yes.
And she's ignored every directive that the commission has given her. So, we're making progress forward, and let's hope it's successful.
Yes, and, and please communicate with me and keep it going, so we can have, for the next meeting, we can have it all lined up.
Whatever.
Okay.
That'd be lovely.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, the second notice of violation is 19 Tamarack Swamp Road, William Schubert. He's come forward. From what I understand, you've, you've just been one of the better cooperating people with us, commission, and I appreciate that.
William Schubert, 19 Tamarack Swamp Road.
Erin?
Oh, the reason I was laughing is, I went out there at like 6 o'clock and took, and Bill was there, took 20 pictures, and the reason I didn't print them out is, we were locked out of the building when we came to the meeting. So, I completely forgot about printing them out. But anyway, so, to give you, he has been working with Roman Rosinski on this, and all the way along, several times Roman has been out, he complies with what Roman says. I, I can see tonight, when I went out there, things have fallen apart a little bit because of these storms. Like, so all these wonderful silt, silt socks that Bill put in, some of them have been overtopped, these huge, because the land wasn't protected, the soil was raw going up the slope. So, I said, "Bill, why didn't you protect it? Why didn't you put straw mulch on it?" And your answer was, "Because I'm not quite down." Like, why put straw mulch and seed? I have to take it down a few more inches. And some places it might be two inches, some places a foot, but meanwhile, it's not protected. So, that continues to flow down some of it into the wetlands. So, I'm going to get, going to go out with Roman, she, he doesn't know it, I just decided this, I'm going to go out with Roman, as I said to you earlier this evening, together. We're going to go together, when you can make it, like at 4 o'clock someday, when you're home, you get home some days at 4, right? And to say, "This over here explicitly, this, do this over here, do this over here, and get this protected." Because I know he's willing to do the work, he just needs a little direction.
Well, I just can't be any happier to work with you on it, so, thank you.
Real quick, though, I mean, I don't know if this is the right platform for it, but like, I do want to get it reestablished. I want stuff to start growing there, so that the erosion stops. I, I asked Roman, he said he hasn't gotten any direction on what to plant there. I, I don't know what, like, what type of seed or where it's available to get.
There's a, there's a great seed store in Plainville, was it Nick? He has all kinds of mixes up there. I'll see if I can find the number and get Erin the number. They got construction mix, seed mix, lawn mix, shade mix, sun mix.
All right, and also...
It may be a help to you.
Would it help, and am I allowed to put down a thin layer of topsoil, just so it's more fertile?
I would think so.
Okay.
When you get down there. Of course, you're probably dealing pretty much in topsoil when you get down to the virgin layer.
Roman had a word for it. I, it's clay, sandy-type stuff that nothing seems to want to grow in.
Okay. All right, I'll get that name for you through Erin. I'll give Erin that name for the seed store. Okay, anything else with him?
Oh, no. That's pretty good, we're pretty good. We've just got to move along a little bit on that.
Valley Green?
I think it is, Plainville? Valley Green?
Valley Green.
I believe that's...
I think it's Valley Green.
Okay.
Excellent. You have a good selection.
A particular type of seed I'm looking for?
Well, that's why I think if you talk to him, then he might be able to guide you with Roman and assistance. You're in a wetland area, you're in a shady area, you tell him the conditions, and they may be able to suggest something.
You may want more than one. You may want something more for the shady area, and then you have that, you know, more of a sunny yard, that you can throw some other seed down, it'll be more successful there.
Well, the yard is, it's pretty much restored. The grass is all, pretty much all back. But it's actually in the wooded area that's still an issue.
Okay, so, don't buy any seed until Roman tells you what kind, okay? Because that's expensive.
Okay, super, thank you. All right, the, the, the other issue tonight is 60, is it 67 Schoolhouse?
Yes.
67 Schoolhouse. She did as we requested. She brought in a letter from, signed by Robert Rogers Jr., president of R.L. Rogers and Sons, indicating that he is giving her a proposal to approximately remove 1,300 tons of brick. The estimate right now, the tip fee now, mitigate the erroneous tip fee charges estimate to be $44,000. Now, that is...
When you say tip fees, is that what it costs to get rid of?
Not the trucking, or the excavation?
It's usually everything.
It's usually everything?
Yeah.
So, you could be in the $40,000 bracket, and of course, economically, that straps her a little bit. But my suggestion is to keep the violation open. I don't know if you want to give her, to renew it every month, or give it up till November. We extend the violation to November. Does that sound all right, Jim?
I don't want to move to extend the violation.
Well, extend the, not...
Keep it, keep it.
Extend the, the notice to remove the violation. Very good, Jim. So, I'll entertain a motion to, to extend the time to remove the violation. the time to remove the violation.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion on sixty-seven Schoolhouse Road to extend the time to remove the violation to November.
November, gotta give it a date.
Twenty twenty-three, or November
November, what's our, what's our, uh, meeting date?
First Wednesday, November. I'm sorry, I don't have a calendar.
First.
November first, twenty twenty-three.
Uh, okay, can, can, can you tweak that a little bit to to remove the fill of the violation, or, not to, we get to remove the violation. She's getting, she removes the fill. So if you could tweak your, your motion a little bit?
Uh, to remove the fill?
To extend the time?
To extend the time to remove the fill to November first.
Okay, good.
Second?
Second.
Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Before we leave this, last time you wanted me to remind you of the possibility of putting it on the land records, putting the notice of violation on the land records. Or not, we can wait on that.
Well,
That, that could be wise.
The interesting thing with with this group, they, they've seemed to, um, change their mind a little bit and trying to work with us. So let's see what happens in November. If we're getting nowhere with it, then it's, it's easy enough to put on the land records. All right, let's see. Maplewood, Tamarack. Okay, Maplewood.
Oh, um
Pallets violation.
Are we going to pursue anything with Carl Kaislick, or drop the matter, I'll take it off the agenda?
Well, no, he hasn't got a date yet, so any, any of the other violations are to remain in effect.
Okay, so can you affirm that, that his, his notice of violation remains in effect?
Yeah, any of the additional violations will remain into effect.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that any of the remaining violations to remain in effect.
Second?
Second.
Discussion. Call for a vote. Nick?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right. At least. Nothing else tonight? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Caruso?
Who?
Who was the seconder?